Good evening and welcome to Channel 17 Town Meeting Television's continuing coverage of Town Meeting 2025. We're here discussing the Winuski School Budget with two candidates for the Winuski School Board, the two-year seat. That's right. Kate Staddell and Emily Bowers. Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
Of course, you can call us at 802-862-3966 if you have any questions. Of course, we have some prepared questions which have been provided to the candidates in advance, so we're going to have an opportunity to talk about that. So thanks again. And Emily, why don't we start with you with an opening statement? Why are you running? What qualifies you? And what else you'd like to tell us about yourself?
Yeah, I want to reiterate, thank you for having us. I'm excited to be a part of this process. My name is Emily. I have been a Winuski resident for the past three years. I am a proud product of public education in the public school system and am a passionate advocate for equity in education in all areas for all students. Kids and their families, disability rights, and being a voice for students and teachers when they feel like they don't have one. I'm a community-minded individual. I currently serve as the Justice of the Peace in Winuski. I did for the past two years and was just recently re-elected as Justice of the Peace. I have worked on local and statewide campaigns to help elect people to Montpelier who have not only Winuski but just our entire state's best interests at heart. And I'm also the Chair of the Board of Civil Authority where I recently helped assess properties to help homeowners and renters lower their property taxes and kind of reduce their cost of housing. Whatever is put in front of me, I tackle with determination and enthusiasm and I'm a quick learner and will always do my reading, no matter what the subject material may be. And I'm a firm believer in the idea that the best way to make change is to get involved and to get your hands in the system. And so that's kind of why I'm running. I live my values every day. I try my best to be an advocate for people who need it and to be a voice and use any privileges I have to make my community a better place. I believe that I'm the best candidate to serve on the school board and kind of help shape the continued education system and the betterment of our children.
Thank you so much, Emily.
Yeah, thank you.
Kate Staddell.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running.
Hi, I'm Kate Staddell. I'm really happy to be here and I'm also wildly nervous and uncomfortable, so bear with me. I guess that is something that sets me apart is that I am not a career politician and have zero political ambition. I'm running because I love Winuski. Born and raised in Vermont, but I've lived in Winuski for almost 10 years now. I remember going to my daughter's kindergarten orientation and just being blown away by the mission statement which did cite equity and social justice. And I was, you know, moved to tears with that. I love these kids. I love my community. I'm very involved. I've been volunteering in my kid's class since she has been in kindergarten. And so I've gotten to know her friends and her, their families and the teachers, the staff. I love this school. It's very special to me. Well, and I guess I have an extensive mental health background. I'm a licensed clinical mental health counselor and I've been working in the mental health field for over 20 years, so I have a lot of experience with that. I also worked with the state of Vermont as a young adult counselor, a YAC, and was in different high schools in different school districts. And yeah, and so I have seen, you know, I've been in schools, I've worked with young people, and I have a good awareness of how mental health issues can affect learning. You know, Winuski has a unique population with some of the highest levels of poverty in the state, and this impacts mental health and learning. And I think that that is an awareness that I'll bring to the table. And given how diverse our student body is economically, culturally, linguistically, I think that I can bring my experience to this role and support the good work that's already being done here. You know, and then I don't, I could talk about how I've gotten like merit awards and a commissioner's award and like that kind of stuff for, you know, the Belle Kate Community Spirit Award. But I think what really is important for people to know is that I love Winuski and I love my, you know, the community, everyone from like, you know, Nate at the library to the lifeguards. I'm like very involved with like the after-school programs that help my kid. And so like the people that do love our kids, I'm connected with. And so I'm an ear for my community to bring concerns or hopes to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So why don't we get right into the budget?
Oh, yeah.
Winuski is proposing a $33.2 million budget this year at a per pupil cost of about $15,375, which has to be listed on every ballot now. So tell us, do you, Kate, your position on this budget? Do you support it? Do you think it will meet the needs of the community? Are you concerned about any of the cuts in services that may be proposed? Give us your thoughts in a couple minutes.
Cool, thank you. I do support this budget. I've done some recon and have asked different people in the community about it. You know, I'm a homeowner and we just went through a reappraisal, which is long overdue. But basically, our property values have doubled. And I think that the school board has really taken that into consideration, has been really thoughtful in how they worked the budget. And I think they've done a really good job of soliciting community input. And from what I understand, the community largely opted to keep things as they are, which would have required, I think, a 7% to 8% increase. And because of, you know, just being considerate of our community, I think the board opted to go with a more middle-of-the-road plan which would ensure that non-negotiables were kept. Am I boring you? Okay.
No, this is the question.
Okay, right. So I was like, ensuring that non-negotiables are kept, but also, you know, making some concessions and having to get rid of some positions, which I think is hard. You know, so, you know, we can get into like homestead tax projections and looking like they're going to drop from 1.26% to 1.25%, which, you know, is down from 2.16%, which because of Act 127, which our students are weighted differently or weighted, it benefits our particular district because of the different factors affecting Winuski students. You know, we've been able to keep, I guess they've been, they're able to keep the costs or the projections down to 1.25%, which is excellent. You know, and one thing, you know, I'm going to sound like Bernie, who I love, whatever. I think health insurance costs are insane. And that 12% increase really is like a killer. And so I think, you know, I think everybody's feeling that. And, you know, we need some kind of intervention on that front with, yeah, anyways, thank you. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Emily, tell us your view of the budget. Do you support it? And do you have any concerns about some of the aspects of that budget?
Yeah, I mean, you and I are pretty eye-to-eye on most things in that budget. I also support the current budget. You know, school administrators and the school board and staff and state officials worked really hard to put that together and present it to the voters. And, you know, as a community member, I trust what they have to say and their opinions. And I think it's overall a really good thing for the community. But that being said, I'm watching closely what's happening in Montpelier. I'm good friends with Representative Daisy Rebecca and Senator Martine. And, you know, we are in contact with each other a lot about these things. You know, specifically Act 127, which I'm sure you know, but for those who don't, it's an act that is relating to improving student equity by adjusting the school funding formula and providing education quality funding oversight, which I think is needed everywhere. You know, and I think with the right people on the board, the right people who are listening and the people who have, you know, the voice of, or the ear of the town and the city, we can kind of fine-tune spending to ensure that students and educators get the best of what they need. You know, healthcare costs are high, wages don't match the cost of living. There's not a single person who is not feeling the strain of inflation and, you know, the economy. And so I think that keeping that in mind and keeping teachers and the students and their families in mind when creating these budgets is for the best.
So let's use that as a bridge to the next question, Emily, on teacher well-being and retention.
Yes.
What do you understand to be the current level of morale in the district? And what role do you think the school board has in retaining good teachers and support staff?
Yeah, I think not just in Winuski, but around the country, morale is relatively low. You know, teachers love what they do and people don't become educators without a passion for children and education and the betterment of the future. But it is hard to kind of keep that enthusiasm when literacy rates are at an all-time low and books are being banned all over the place and the federal government is threatening education policies and funding. And, you know, like I said earlier, pay has not increased to match a living wage for, you know, renters, homeowners, whoever. Most people live paycheck to paycheck, myself included. And that's hard to kind of keep that enthusiasm. And that does affect what happens in the classroom, whether or not they, you know, best intentions. It sometimes does trickle into students and parents and teachers. You know, I think that as the school board, the biggest thing, the first step we have to not only attract good teachers but to maintain them is to listen. I have family who are educators. I have family who have been doing it for decades and people who started in 2020 in COVID and had to, first year on the job, adapt to a whole new system that they were not taught in school. And I see how much they put of themselves into their students, into their classes. And I see the toll that that takes on them, both mentally and sometimes physically. You know, that they get sick, they get mentally unwell, and there's not a lot of break for them. You know, we as a society have put the weight of the world on teachers and have kind of left them alone to deal with the consequences on their own. And I think as a board, it is our job to listen and listen to the complaints, hear what they have to say, and not only take it to heart, but then act to adapt any changes that we might be able to. You know, students have really good mental health resources in the Winuski school system, which is great. But I think those need to be made available for teachers as well. And I think that, you know, we all can relate to having a bad day at work, but if we know that there are people on the outside in the system who have our back, who are always willing to stand up and fight for our well-being, it makes even the worst days feel a little bit better. And so, you know, that's kind of my hope in being on the board is that I can kind of be the mouthpiece for these educators who really do just love these kids and go into, want to stay in education. They want to stay. You know, my friends are like, I'm burnt out, but I do this because I love it. And they need people who can go, hey, guys, this is what, this is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that's my big thing.
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So Kate, tell us about your view on the current level of morale in the district with the teachers and how the school board can help to retain teachers and support staff.
Great. Yeah, I, it's a good question. I, I don't see the low morale. And maybe they're just all putting on a good show for me when I'm in there, but I don't see it personally when I'm in the school. I actually see the opposite, but again, like I'm open to hearing and learning more. I think that, you know, we have to offer competitive pay, and I think that Winuski does do that. And I'd say like morale, you know, there's a lot of heart in Winuski and you can see it in the different like celebrations and different assemblies and whatnot that they have, and also just in the day-to-day in the classroom. One thing that I think is worth noting is that it is a stressful time to be an educator. You know, there's staffing shortages, there's, you know, science of reading, new curriculum, students with diverse needs, budget constraints, rising costs, pressures from local, state, and national political agendas. It's a lot. But Winuski has heart. You know, my kid's teacher, I can't believe she's been there for 20 years. She looks like she's 20, like, so that's wild to me. But she's been there 20 years and I think a lot of the teachers there have been there for like decades. So I can't even believe that, but they love it. You know, that's what I see. And they love it because they love these kids and they form like beautiful relationships with these kids and their families and they'll have siblings like going through their classrooms. You know, and then just, I guess, another quick thing about morale is that, you know, Caitlin McLeod Bluber, she just won the Vermont Teacher of the Year Award. Principal John Bertham, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly. He just won, he's the high school principal, so I haven't met him yet. But he's just won Principal of the Year. But Grace Holcomb, Ms. Grace, who I love, she just won Counselor of the Year. And so, you know, that is a measure of morale and success that these guys are doing a wonderful job. And yeah, that's that. Thanks.
Do you, well, you just mentioned the head of the high school, and I'll just start with you. This is, this question's not here, so.
Yeah.
How would you evaluate the leadership of the Winuski School District? And why don't you just start, and then perhaps Emily you could add to it?
So much love. I have so much love for Wilmer and for Cheveria, I think is how you pronounce his last name. The administration's been wonderful. And yeah, I, you know, I have a lot to learn. I'm not an expert in any of this stuff, but just as a parent and as a community member, as a taxpayer, I'm really, really, I feel like we hit the jackpot here in Winuski. I feel really lucky and fortunate. I love the vision of our school. I think it's, I don't know if you've ever been in there, but it's just a really special, special place. Yeah, I think they're doing a great job and I want to support their work. That's actually why I'm running, is because I want, I think we're doing a lot of things right and I want to support what they're doing. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Emily, your view of the leadership?
I would agree with that. I have spoken to the school board a couple times and have been in the school and you have met teachers and things, and it's just, and it's kind of amazing how much people care. And, you know, it's unfortunately rare to see that in a school board and a county and, you know, they're, it's heartwarming and it's, I agree with you. It's, I'm running because I want to support them and because I think that we are doing really great things and we need a foundation and we need to be able to keep going. I think a lot of people are feeling, they feel the need for change. I think, you know, when I say morale is low, I don't mean that people are miserable in teaching. I, you know, the, one of the things I respect so much about educators is that they do, they put everything else outside the classroom, outside the classroom. And, but they're, you know, it's a tough time right now and I think that there's this kind of thirst for change in the air and whether that's just a little bit or whether that's, you know, a massive change. I think, you know, having people on the board who love what we do, love what the system does, because let's, let's keep working towards a better future. Let's keep going with this momentum that we have is, is what's going to help with, you know, keep those teachers and keep these really great people in the system for the long term.
So this ties into the question about challenges, but if you were to identify the one to three things that you have on your agenda as a, to be a school board member, what are those in terms of supporting the school district?
Yeah, I, you know, I think for me, a lot of it comes down to making sure that each student has their needs met where they are. You know, I think one of the biggest challenges, and we talked about this earlier, is the governor wants to condense the school systems into five school systems. And I don't think that's for the best. I think even if it ends up saving a little money, I think having a wider option of schools is what is best for students. You know, and I'm going to be closely, closely watching that decision and also talking to our representatives in Montpelier about that and kind of sharing my voice and encouraging people in our community as well to share those opinions because nothing is going to change if we don't speak up. You know, I think that the federal, the federal government is the biggest threat right now, I think, to education systems. Funding and policy, it's hard to feel secure both as a student, a teacher, a parent in education when that education system could change or just be eliminated overnight. And so those things are, you know, going to be on the top of my mind, funding. But my biggest thing is, you know, every student is different. Every student learns differently. And we need to support teachers and staff and students who need that not-one-size-fits-all model. You know, a lot of my success in school came from teachers who saw that maybe I needed a little bit extra time on tests or I needed to approach a lesson a little differently. And so they stayed out for school to help me learn in a way that they didn't have the time to do in the classroom. You know, when they were, they saw maybe I was going through something at home and they needed an adult ear. You know, those are the most important people in a kid's life a lot of the times. And they were able to do those things and able to help and able to adjust as needed and provide things not just for me but for other students who needed something outside of the norm because they had a support system behind them in both the administration at the schools and on the school board. And so that is something that I will bring to the table is, you know, that, keeping that in mind that, you know, individualized education programs are crucial to the success of everyone in the school.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Kate, your view on the challenges or the primary issues that you hope to address?
Yeah, I mean, I think like the biggest challenge is the same challenge everywhere, which is money, lack thereof. Aside from that, yes, I am concerned about the governor and the Secretary of Education's proposals to shrink like over 100 school districts into five. That, yeah, got some feelings about that. And again, I don't know enough too, you know, so I'm, I'm open and willing to like hear more about that, but my knee-jerk is, it's concerning.
On what level?
On what level? I think Winuski's really unique. And so to shrink the Winuski School District or to like consolidate it with, let's just say, like, you know, Charlotte, we have wildly different populations. And so the idea that what's going to work in, or Charlotte's going to work in Winuski is, I think, short-sighted, putting it like nicely. And I think there's other things that could be explored before taking this, I think, a very extreme. I mean, he called it bold. I would say it's extreme plan or course of action.
So your view of a super-regional governance structure you don't see is necessarily appropriate and serving the needs in Chittany County, for example, the diverse student base?
Yes, I do. I think.
Does anybody agree with that?
Cool. So good. Yeah, so it really doesn't matter who wins. Just kidding. But, um, yeah, no, I guess like challenges, I would say, you know, I witnessed the second reading of the sanctuary policy last Wednesday at the school board meeting, and it was really powerful. And, you know, a lot of kids spoke up, their families spoke up, teachers spoke up. That's a huge issue right now for our particular population where kids are scared and they're scared for their families. And so when kids are scared, they're going to have a hard time being able to focus on school. And if they don't feel safe in school, it's going to be really hard to learn. And so that's something I'm looking at. You know, I think Wilmer, the teachers, staff, and the current board are doing an excellent job of, you know, considering the limitations of the sanctuary policy and they're having meetings to inform the public about that. They just had one last Saturday. You know, I think bottom line is that teachers and staff are dedicated to these kids and to keeping these kids safe. And they need to have, you know, just like we have policies, you know, for different fire drills or whatnot, we need to have policies and structures in place to help teachers and staff do their jobs should different things come up. And that's where I think the school board could be most helpful. That's where I would see my role anyways, in trying to be helpful with that. But I think it's a significant issue.
Let's move on to, thank you, to the question about measuring success. So, you know, we use metrics, use standardized tests. Are you satisfied with the outcomes of those tests? How important do you think they are? And how would you measure the success of the school district? And we'll start with you, Kate.
Okay. I'd say the real marker of success is student growth. And while, you know, our students do tend to score lower on standardized testing than in other districts, there has been improvement and that's what I'm more interested in is that, you know, there is upward growth. You know, every school district is different. Winuski has a very diverse population and it doesn't make sense to have standardized testing be the only litmus for success. I think the, the school board mission is worth noting, which is, you know, all students will, it's our mission statement, sorry. All students will graduate from the Winuski School District college and career-ready at a cost supported by the Winuski community. Winuski School District students will lead healthy, productive, and successful lives and engage with their local and global community. And I'm interested in how we can, and I had some talks about this, around how we can quantitatively measure this. Personally, I see kids grow and change over the school year and over the years. And so that, to me, is a way to measure success, is like you see these kids, like my kid at the beginning of the year couldn't read, and now she's like putting down those little Critter books like it's her job, you know? And so, growth is important. I see teachers doing beautiful work and every effort is being made to accommodate for students coming from diverse backgrounds in every way, like socio-economically, racially, culturally, linguistically. You know, it's going to look different here. I think it's awesome. You know, another measure of success or student, you know, growth is, you know, do kids want to be at school? Do they feel safe at school? Is the learning environment stimulating, joyous? Do teachers love their jobs? And that's what I observe, you know? And so.
That's good.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Emily?
I would say you and I also see eye-to-eye on these as well. I have a hard time with the idea of measuring success based on a standardized test and whether a student meets an arbitrary number that is based off a very generalized set of questions and answers. I know I'm not alone in saying that I am not always the best tester. You know, sometimes I would do really well in the class and then get to the test and the material would just evaporate out of my brain. And it is hard when that is deemed the measure of success when it shouldn't be. There are so many more factors to consider in a student's success than just one number on a test that they get taken at the end of the year. Also, I think it puts a lot of strain on teachers as well. I remember, you know, taking those standardized tests and the teachers stressing out about their job and their security based on their students', you know, results. And I think that is just a, it's a, it's a hard environment to succeed in when there's all that kind of stress just lingering there in the air. You know, I think that measuring success for a student, as I said before, no, two students are the same. And what works for one student could fail the next student. And it's hard to measure success that way when it's just one number. So I think, kind of like what you said, it's about growth. It's about progress. Can the student solve complex math questions better than they could at the start of the year? Can the student read at a higher level than they could when they first came into this class? You know, is this teacher able to meet the needs of the students successfully, you know, when they, when those needs arise? I think that is what we should be measuring more than a standardized test. You know, over the past few years, Winuski has seen a higher level of student performance. And, you know, I think while they tend to test lower than statewide average on standardized testing, that amount of continued progress and improvement is a sign that we're on the right track here. You know, we have the right mindset and with the right people on the board and the right people kind of supporting the teachers and the staff with these goals in mind, I think we can continue that, that forward progress for our students.
Thank you. Why don't we segue into your final statement? You have a minute.
Yeah. Yeah, first, I would just like to say thank you again for having us and thank you to the voters for tuning in and for caring about your community and who kind of helps lead the way for your, for your students. You know, school is a safe space for so many kids. It is oftentimes the only place they can get a guaranteed hot meal. It's a place where they can lean on their friends. It's a place where they have adults who listen and care about them, not just inside the classroom but outside the classroom. You know, teachers and students, they shape the future. You know, I was told a lot growing up that it was the kids who were going to save us, right? It's the future generations who are going to come in and fix the problems that we have created. And I don't like that. I think it's up to us to fix the problems for the next generation. So when they come to our age, they are no longer, they're not still cleaning up the same messes that they were dealing with as students. Kids are so perceptive. They pick up on things. They are aware of the stresses going on in the world, locally, federally, globally, things like that. And I think it is our job to be the adults and to go, you focus on math and we will take the big things away from you. And so, yeah, I will, I want to run for the school board. I think I'm the best person for the school board because I have everyone's best intentions at heart, students, teachers, staff, administration, and I care very deeply about my community.
Emily, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Kate, your closing statement? You have a minute?
Okay. I, you know, thank you for having me here. I, you know, again, I'm not a politically ambitious person and I'm not trying to like, I don't know, I have no agenda here. I just really want to give back to my community. I'm in the school a lot. I have a kid that goes there and I see the teachers and staff and her friends and their families and I'm, you know, really involved. I, I think it's hard to. I I think it's hard to sell prevention, but Winuski does a really good job of that, whether it's, you know, Veggie Van Go, helping kids and their families have food to like Patrice, who is the wellness director, I think that's his title. And he, you know, makes sure that kids who are, you know, don't have enough winter clothing are taken care of. And it's just, it's just wonderful. So basically, I just, I really want to support what we're doing well and I think we're doing a lot really well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
I want to thank you both. I'm sorry we don't have more time.
That's fine.
That's okay.
But I I love talking with you both and I really appreciate that we've been speaking with two candidates for the Winuski School Board, Emily Bowers and Kate Staddle. They're both running for one seat and that's a two-year seat on the school board. Thanks for watching here at Town Meeting TV and stay tuned for continuing coverage of Town Meeting 2025.